Let's start the meeting with a roll call, please.
Yes, Alderman Ambassador.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Patac.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Levery.
Present.
Jefferson.
Present.
Herndon.
Here.
Crane.
Here.
Let's go to the public comment part of the meeting. Please come forward and state your name, please. Tell us your concerns, thoughts, ideas, suggestions.
Dawn Hicks. So I had to leave the meeting early last time, so I guess there were some uncertainties of what I was trying to explain about the air monitor and the veteran banners. Uh, one, the, as far as the veteran banners on our polls, we had flags just a couple of weeks ago. By detour, I see that we've got clips on a lot of our polls for flags. So I know you guys said the Christmas lights weren't allowed to be up there, but if flags are up there, why couldn't we maybe do the veteran banners as well? Um, as far as the air monitor, Joe, uh, one thing, if it was in the four hundreds, we would all be in the hospital. I don't know if you saw what the gauge is, but that's pretty extreme air pollution. What I was trying to point out was the fact that some of our readings that are going high in the middle of the night could not possibly be things like just random stagnant air or Canadian fires, or it would be showing that on other air monitors throughout the area everywhere from Iowa to Indiana to Chicago. Chicago is in the green of all things, and here we're sitting at a hundred and twelve in the dark orange. So my point was something's going on in our area in the middle of the night that should not be happening, and it is negatively affecting our environment. So what I'm asking is not, hey, it's gotta be a month-long thing before the EPA takes it serious, or it's gotta be four hundred and something where we're practically laying on the sidewalk dying because we don't have fresh air, but just what is the source of what is causing our air to be so crappy that it is worse than the middle of Chicago of all places? That's where I was trying to go with that. Is there anything that I'm not explaining that I would like to address instead of waiting two weeks from now to address? Can anyone direct me on who I would need to talk to to see about getting these veterans acknowledged in our town and get banners? Okay, well, once again, I'll do my own research, and I guess I'll make it a point to make it happen. Thank you.
Anybody else like to use public comment?
Hello, um, Dina Hicks. So I am also wanting to touch on Mr. Jefferson's comments from two weeks ago. Very upset with the things that he said and the way he said it. His words exactly, I would just like to, uh, let everybody know in this room that the air monitor ranges from zero to five hundreds. Well, if it's in the one twenties, it means it's unhealthy for sensitive groups. Sensitive groups are people with heart disease, with diabetes, with lung issues. So if you have respiratory disease, it may make it more difficult for you to breathe as vigorously as normal. You can experience coughing, chest discomfort, wheezing, shortness of breath, unusual fatigue, people with heart disease. Um, it can cause a serious problem in a very short amount of time, even heart attacks with no warning signs. Thus, these patients should not assume that they are safe just because they don't have symptoms. They can have short chest pain or tightness, palpitations, shortness of breath. And while children do not usually experience these health problems from short-term exposure, evidence indicates that long-term exposure can affect their growth, and since they are more active outdoors, it affects them the most. So he says, I really don't see a cause for alarm, although Dawn apparently thought so. I just wanted everybody to know that zero to five hundred is the range, and if we have readings of four hundred and fifty on one day, maybe I'd make a phone call, but one twenty, that's regular stuff. So one hundred to one fifty unhealthy for sensitive groups. General public and sensitive individuals in particular are at risk to experience irritation and respiratory problems. Hazardous three hundred to five hundred is for everyone, not just sensitive people. They're at high risk to experience strong irritations, adverse health effects that could even trigger illness. Everyone should avoid exercise and remain indoors. Where is this, um, air monitor? It's at Rotary Park. Are we not trying to get people to come out there? Are we not putting in fitness centers and let's exercise, let's play on the playground? Okay. Air quality in this range triggers health warnings and emergency conditions by media outlets. This is from the EPA in a range from three hundred to five hundred. The entire population is more likely to be affected by serious health conditions. So why our alderman is telling us that we shouldn't worry about it really is very troubling. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak tonight? Anybody else like to speak tonight? Move on to proclamation.
Proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Motion to accept, uh, the proclamation is October is Violence Awareness Month?
I move we accept the place on file Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation.
Second. Motion for Malmon, various, Malmon and Thompson? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Approval of minutes.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, place on file, each alderman has a copy.
Second.
Motion, Malmon Reynolds, Malmon and Herndon, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Discussion of potential action of the following petitions.
Request of Sam Volpe of one oh five Con Avenue for a no parking sign in front of his property and related matters.
Regarding, sorry. Regarding the item, I've not had a chance to discuss it with Mr. Volpe directly. I did not want to prohibit this going to the council today. Hopefully for forwarding to streets, hours of traffic, I can discuss with him further before that meeting if you have any questions.
Yeah, I've driven by there several times the last few days and haven't seen any cars parked in front of his house. I don't know what, when the issue is, so, but I'm gonna make a motion to refer to the streets alleys and, uh, parking committee.
Second.
Motion, Malmon, various, Malmon, Jefferson, to send the committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
I'll put it on the agenda for the street alley traffic. Two weeks from today, directly following the finance committee.
Thank you, Chairman Ambassador.
Okay, request from Mossy Paz to install a single-facing wall sign at eight twenty-eight First Street and related matters.
Your Honor, I move that we grant the request.
Second.
Motion, Malmon, Patac, Malmon and Thompson, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, let's take the roll on that.
Yes. Alderman Ambassador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Okay, request of the City LaSalle Foundation, LaSalle County Merchants for a special event permit to use the city's pocket park on First Street from three to nine PM Friday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, to host a Gould Night Out event and related matters.
Uh, this, this issue is also with the LaSalle downtown merchants, and, um, Danny was going to come to present it today. She unfortunately was unable to, but she did advise me that they're going to take the alcohol portion of that out of the, uh, request at this time. I do believe there might be some people here in the back that if you have any questions about this event, that they will be able to answer those questions, so thank you.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we grant it.
Second.
Motion, Malmon, Thompson, Malmon and Reynolds? Take the roll, please.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Ambassador.
Aye.
You guys are welcome to stay, but it's, you know, your, your item is passed. You can enjoy the evening if you want, but it's up to you. Thank you. Reports to the officers.
Building inspectors' report for July two thousand twenty-four showing total fees collected of two thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars with a total value of construction of a hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Your Honor, I move we, we accept the building inspector's report for July twenty twenty-four.
Motion, second.
Motion, Malmon Ambassador, Malmon and Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Monthly police income report for September two thousand twenty-four showing total fees collected of seven thousand five hundred forty-five dollars.
Your Honor, I move that we accept the place on file the monthly police income report for September two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion, Malmon, Herndon, Malmon and Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried, communications.
Illinois Department of Revenue report showing sales tax collected for February two thousand twenty-four of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents and home rule sales tax of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-three cents for a total of a hundred and eighty-five, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Your Honor, I move that we accept a revenue report, sales tax as read, placed on file, if each and every alderman have a copy.
Second.
Motion, Malmon, Patac, Malmon, Levery, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Bids.
Discussion of potential action on including but not limited to potential approval of bid for two thousand twenty-four water system improvements, new well drilling, AKA deep well, and the existing water treatment plant project and related matters.
Your Honor, I have a question for Brian.
Sure.
The low bid is substantially lower than the other two. What do you?
I'm not real knowledgeable in this, but I was at the opening and I talked to the consulting engineer. Because, um, municipal is, there is some state statute that if unemployment rate of greater than five percent over two months, that you have to use ninety percent Illinois, um, Illinois employees. Um, municipal well in both Illinois and Iowa, and my understanding, we're not in that, that window of the five percent unemployment. The, my, my general impression is that higher bidders are, are pushing for, for that item, and I, I think they bid accordingly knowing that others probably will not bid it. That's the kindest way I can, um, we, we feel it should be between two point five and three million dollar. So it just kinda makes sense.
Thank you for that.
Do they cross the box and everything?
Yeah, everything.
Okay.
Everything is good. Now, if we do go forward and award this, there are some things that have to happen that it, that he's a loan with forgiveness, and we also have the USDA as part of that five hundred thousand dollar that we got from our representative. Um, there's other things that have to happen, so this is important to continue on, uh, everything getting, uh, verified. And if there's a dispute from one of the other bidders, then that has to go through the legal process with the state. But we, at this point, discussing with, um, our consultant on this recommends that we do a plea.
Subject to those contingencies and subject to them eventually have to enter into probably a standard contract.
Exactly.
We've used, yeah.
I'm sorry.
We've used municipal before, do we have any problems with them?
Um, I don't believe we've, Patrick would know better on that. I don't believe we've had any, um, I know they did some work or did the well thirteen, and we did have one gasket, but it was repaired at no cost. Um, other than that, I'm not, I'm not real sure if there is.
Is there a completion time? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know for sure. Is there a complete date? I think that's the biggest concern I'm concerned about.
I think it's a hundred and eighty days after award.
Very good.
Um, and that's where we had discussed going to a twenty-four hour be, you know, that's this whole process, the deep well, to go to a twenty-four hour and try to do some site screening for lighting, and they would also create that sound barrier to minimize the impacts for the neighbors much, because this is right at the south side of the water treatment.
I mean.
So we, all, all bids are equal. They'll, they'll provide the sound barrier, the lighting.
Yes, everything is, is, they, the sound, the sound barrier, the lighting, light screening to, to as much as they can, but realize the boom is sixty foot in the air or whatever that boom is to drill, and it needs to have light to make it safe for twenty-four hour drilling. Um, so as much as they can, they will screen it, but they will have the barrier. That was all acknowledged in the addendums that we, that we put out, and everyone acknowledged the addendum.
One last question, if, if for whatever reason the hoops that are required to be jumped, let's, let's just say we approve it. Can I, if for some reason they back out because there was a hoop, this has to be rebid again then?
Um, it does not, but I would recommend it.
Right.
I wouldn't go to the second bidder on this.
Well, based, based on the number, I think it would be, it would be competitive again, but, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Pleasure? It's constant pleasure.
Your Honor, I recommend we accept the lump sum bid price of two million, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, even, uh, the low bidder from municipal well and pump to do our deep water well.
Second.
Motion, Thompson, Malmon and Reynolds, please take the roll.
Is that subject to the contingencies that were discussed, Alderman? Yes. Applying with the EPA rules and regs and entering into the contract, et cetera, discussed by, um, city engineer and by myself? Yes, your Honor, or, yes, you.
Okay, Alderman Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Ambassador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Okay, discussion of potential action bids on and potential sale of the city of LaSalle's interest in certain surplus lots and related matters, which lots slash properties include the following premises, eleven fifty-four, Ten Street, thirteen fifteen, First Street, six thirty-six Lafayette Street, eight twenty-seven Hennepin Street, nine forty-five Second Street, and ten thirty-one Second Street and related matters.
Your Honor, are we gonna do these individually?
They need to be done individually, yes.
Okay.
And, and anyone that you accept should also be subject to them, obviously, uh, entering into a contract with the city and it's affecting the city and, um, obviously complying with other city ordinances, et cetera.
Okay, eleven fifty-four, Ten Street.
We didn't receive a bid on that one, did we?
Yes.
We did.
You did?
Yep.
That last?
Eleven fifty-four, Ten Street's a home, right? Basically, a Ten Street in La Harf. It's actually in pretty decent shape when the city got control of it. We decided this is one we could actually lots of, maybe somebody who could renovate, people that we trust, and, uh, again, I think we got a pretty good bid on it.
That's on the corner of La Harf.
Yep. Malmon Patac, you.
No, I, I was the last one. I wasn't going in a different order. I'm fine with that.
I believe you got four bids on it.
Okay, here it is. Four bids, one for, two for ten thousand, one for fifteen, and one for twenty-five thousand.
Knowing the bid for twenty-five thousand, the person involved in that, I think we're okay with that. And not too often do we get some money back, uh, especially on that situation, so we'll get, should be, see for sure cover our, uh, our costs on the legal piece.
Before we accept the, the bid, any of them, uh, our building inspector, uh, check the property?
Yeah, we checked all that before we put out the bid.
Okay.
I recommend we accept a high bid for that piece of property. Just Felix Reynolds. Right.
Felix Reynolds for twenty-five?
Yeah.
We have a motion for Alden.
Second.
Second.
Second, Malmon Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Reynolds.
Here. Uh, yes.
Okay, Levery.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Ambassador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
I believe on, uh, the one for Ten Street gentleman, we should probably put a timeframe, if you guys agree on, uh, when we should probably expect something to be done, you know, on it, as well as maybe the one on, uh, the open lot on First and Union, because, uh, we had multiple people put in for that with some good ideas.
Would you, would you think, Your Honor, that it would be, uh, that they start sometime in the spring?
Yeah.
I mean, they could obviously start earlier, but the springs will all gonna start seeing issues if they don't.
I agree. Yeah, I, I mean, that, I, I would think, yeah, I don't, a year from May first, maybe, you know?
Or six months from the day of sale.
Whatever you guys wanna do. I'm just thinking, I don't know how much they could do in the winter time, you know, weather's starting to close in.
Yeah, you need to mess up quickly to get them titled. Uh, Your Honor, I make a motion that we give them six months from transfer property to start work on the home.
Okay.
Should we give them a finish time?
You're saying start work, we want to complete.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not getting completed.
I think six months is.
That's pretty optimistic.
That's very optimistic.
Oh, yeah, I think Alderman Thompson was thinking start date.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about, they gotta maintain it, they gotta show.
I think.
Cause they have to get on. Yeah, I was thinking both start and finish date.
Yeah.
Would a year be fair?
Yeah, they can always come. I'm just.
For, for week time now on materials and stuff, et cetera?
No. If they make significant progress, they can come. Like you said, my only concern is when spring, when the weeds start to grow and stuff starts to change from winter.
They'll still be responsible for that right away.
Right, but I mean, if we stipulate that.
Yeah. I mean, I have no problem if, if, you know, what do you guys think? If, if they don't get this done by the time, we go to the next guy and say, hey, you still interested? You know what I mean? I, I'm pretty confident that this gentleman will do it, he's done work in the past, but.
Can we clear up that start?
You did.
Time, please.
One year from, uh.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we give them one year from transfer, the title to have completion of the property.
Second.
What do you mean, they gotta have something built on there?
It's a house, it's a lot. It's a house. They gotta rehab it.
No, no, I mean, they're gonna put the other, the empty lots, are we gonna do that?
Well, we could go back, we could just turn that separately.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this one piece of property, that's the only thing.
Motion, Malmon.
This to be rehabbed with the year, but what's the, what's the, uh, recourse on something of that nature then? If you already got title in their name.
Oh, excuse me.
You know, you're talking about.
You tell us, Jim.
Yeah, you're, I was just gonna say. I was unaware that this was gonna be put on as a condition, quite frankly. When you're selling pieces of property, generally you make the condition before you close. You don't make the condition subsequent to closing. I mean, they're, they're obviously liable for that property once they take possession, so any violations, any code violations, anything.
I know, we don't wanna, we don't want them getting that building just sitting on it, basically, right?
But I mean, we have the hammer, Your Honor, and we obviously have a guy sent out there and say, you need, I need to do this, 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 or it's this much money. I definitely have to comply with all city ordinances and regulations, and if the property is not up to code and that's why it's being sold, if they don't, you, you can give them so much time, I think it'd be reasonable to get it up to code if it's not now. That you could do.
I don't know.
Once they.
Why can't, why can't we, uh, say title will be given after completion of work?
Where's the liability? It's our property and he's working on it, and I don't like that at all. I see the point in it, but.
Okay.
Liability.
What do you guys think?
If we give them a start date, then we take it back, they don't start. Once they start, you, you know, they already put money onto it, so then, yeah.
I think turning, the defender's basically saying, once we give them the title.
Once it's in.
Do we have any control, right?
That's the point.
Once they get the title?
That, that was my point. Once, once you close on the property, um, and, and, you know, if you're not comfortable with the bidder as completing the work in a reason we, then you, then I would say you wouldn't accept the bid, but you're not having.
Didn't we, uh, didn't we have something there for when we did Bird's Building, first Marquette, or first Brett, all right? Can we do something when we had the, uh, you know, the, the southwest corner of Third and Buckland?
When we entered into that contract and bid that whole, made it, entered into that, the whole petition to have that approved was in a different format than what these bid specs were put out as. I mean, when you, if you, if you, and, and, and for example, when we do the city garage, there will be different parameters than around these matters in regard to selling them. Your Honor, I'd like to amend my motion. They have one year for completion, but they obviously know that because we're granting them that, and if they choose not to be able to do that, then we'll go to the next higher bidder. No, but they've already put money in it, maybe.
We can't do that once we transfer the title.
Well, we're not gonna transfer the title till they agree to it. We, we grant them this property for twenty-five thousand dollars, and we put a stipulation prior to completing that. Well, then, you'd have to, you'd have to have specs for what you consider a finished property, right?
Yeah, what's a finished property, inside, outside?
Yeah.
Rentable.
Yeah.
If it's rentable, you, you can run it right now, probably, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's gotta be cold.
Yeah, but I mean.
I mean, I, I made a motion.
I, I think we should just sell them as is, and what they do, what if, we can't really stop it, can we?
You just use our city ordinance.
Use our city ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Are you good going back to your, give them a year from May first? Or a year from, uh, a year from, uh.
I, I think it'd be easier just, just, just to leave them alone and, and be cognizant that if they don't start doing repairs and if issues arise, they get tickets. I mean, it's their property.
We're not definitely saying it's not, we don't feel comfortable, but we'd just like to have a safeguard, right?
Right.
Okay. So what's your, your new amendments or your new motion?
I don't know, there's a lot of good points brought up, so.
You just sell the property and then we can just be, be subject to the.
You can cite them for ordinance violations. We know it needs rehabbing if they don't rehab it. Building inspector can cite them for ordinance violations, and they better get compliance, or they're gonna have the same problem that the prior owner did. And I agree with that, and he's our legal counsel, so I withdraw my motion, and we just sell it to the highest bidder, and that's it.
Okay.
Somebody. We should give them, I was gonna say, we should give them a grace time to get the code, though, right? You're not gonna find them. I, I don't, I don't. There isn't a gray spirit. You're not gonna find them on day one. Well, we could, but whoa. You're gonna always exercise reasonable discretion. Okay. I mean, as long as you're doing something with it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, Alderman Thompson.
Motion, Malmon Thompson, second by Malmon Patac, please take the roll.
What was the motion?
Yeah, can we get, can we get to the. Just straight off sale.
All right.
And this is regard to eleven fifty-four?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, um, Alderman Levery.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Ambassador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
You still gotta enter into a contract with the city.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thirteen fifteen, First Street.
And this is one that we have like four bids, three bids, and, and they all had, we asked them, Kurt went back, they asked them their, their plan was, right? One's talking about putting up a, uh, shop, and that would be Cordy, the higher bid. Essentially higher bid, fifteen thousand higher than the ones. The other one was talking about putting like, uh, uh, kind of a building, probably not as nice as Tom's, but a building like that to use for their own personal use for a creation. One talked about building a, a building for, uh, a retail, and they were the lowest bidder, lower bidder, but.
Since this is a vacant lot, we do need like a.
And it's a building, it's a building, it's buildable lot. The other ones coming up are really not gonna be buildable lots, they're, they're too small to go under our.
Because we don't need someone to buy it and just speculate and hold it without building on it, and we don't get any tax value for it.
But I don't know, again, to, to turn to the finisher's point, I don't know if we can dictate that in the sale.
Yeah.
And it's hard to turn away fifteen thousand extra dollars, right, from that bid.
Cordy's at the end, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Your honor, I move that we accept the bid from Cordy for twenty thousand, one dollar and one cent for the property of thirteen fifteen First Street.
Second.
Motion, Alman Patac, and Alman Thompson.
Subject to entering into a contract.
All these are subject to entering into contracts. Motion, Alman Patac, and Alman Thompson, please take the roll.
Alderman Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Six thirty-six Lafayette Street.
It's another lot.
We only accepted one bid.
Is that subject, uh, living the property next to it?
The, and if I, if I understand correctly, the gentleman who lives next door to the property, which is a very small piece of property, is the only bidder.
So, is the lot empty, maybe?
They, i- 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 if it's the person I'm thinking it was, they had a, a party there, it might be a Quincy Nera, I can't pronounce that, but the coming out party, got a live band. They were very respectful, they cleaned up everything. I was, I was really happy having a party a block from my house that you normally could hear, and they really did a really fine job, and I commend them for that. And that's the same individual, cause he's, he's in that house next to that lot. I think that would be wonderful for him to have that piece of property, cause I think he would utilize it.
Alright, I, I make a motion, we accept the bid.
Second.
At six thirty, six thirty-six Lafayette.
Motion, Alman Bassor, Sir Alman Thompson, they accept the bid with, again, the requirement of entering into contract with the city, please take the roll.
Alderman Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Eight twenty-seven Hennepin Street.
Your honor, I move that we accept the bid from Judith Hornicle for the amount of one thousand dollars. This will be her backyard, and she keeps it up on Eighth Street, so this will be a nice advantage.
Second.
Motion, Alman Patac, and Alman Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Nine forty-five Second Street.
This guy bid too, it's right next to his place, I believe. Or ten thirty-one Second.
And all of these are sold as is, and, uh, only given the title evidence that we have, too. That was part of the understanding.
Alderman Reynolds, Alman Patac, your work?
Yeah, I, I, I moved that we accept this bid from Daryl Schmidt for property nine forty-five Second Street for the amount of one thousand dollars, subject to the approval from the city.
Second.
Motion, Alman Patac, and Alman Reynolds?
What, what was he thought? Eleven hundred?
Did I say it's, eleven hundred dollars?
That's what I thought. I thought you just said thousand, that's why I misheard it.
With the understanding, again, of course, agreeing to, uh, contract with the city, please take the roll.
Yes. Alderman and Bassor?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
And ten thirty-one Second Street.
I move that we accept the bid from Craig's Brothers Properties for the amount of fifteen hundred and twenty-five dollars for the property of ten thirty-one Second Street.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion, Alman Patac, and Alman Reynolds, and this is, again, subject to, as Tom was gonna say about entering the contract with the city, please take the roll.
Alderman Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Real quick on that property, that was the one that we ran the sewer through, that, that?
Ten thirty-one?
Ten thirty-one.
Red Cross and Housing?
Yeah, that was the one where I asked to put a, uh, that we need, he spent on that? Because we connected that sewer, alley.
It says, uh, will require sanitary sewer in, in the, in the notice.
In the.
Yep.
Thank you, Chairman, good discussion on that. We did have, I think, six other properties that we got no bids on, so we'll, uh, in the future, we put those back out, maybe if we get no interest, we can go to the neighbor to, hey, you know, Bob, this is available, if you want it. But until then, I guess we'll have to take care of it, rest, cut the grass. appointments, resignations, nothing tonight, standing committees.
Discussion, potential action regarding the recommendation of streets, alleys, and traffic committee regarding adding a stop sign for southbound traffic on Linden Avenue at the Kilmer Road intersection, in consideration of no parking on the west side of Linden Avenue from driveway nearest the Kilmer Road intersection to corner and related matter, parking matters on Kilmer, Linden, and Creepport Street.
Uh, your honor, we couldn't make a decision tonight, so we tabled it for two weeks from tonight, at the traffic, uh, meetings right after the finance meeting, two weeks from tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Bassor. Special committees.
Discussion, potential action on zoning board of appeals recommendation regarding the request for variance concerning premises at twelve thirteen Canal Street, Ruer, within the city of La Salle and related matters.
Zoning board recommended unanimously to grant the petitioner's request for a variance, uh, finding that it met in general the parameters of the city ordinances. And this is reducing front yard setback from twenty-five feet to thirteen feet, property twelve thirteen Canal Street, for the purpose of constructing and using the premises as a, uh, for storage units, and the, the developer also indicated that he's gonna cooperate with his neighbor to the east, and that had raised some concerns, and he also, uh, had conferred with the neighbor to the, uh, west as well, and then it was, he also indicated he was willing to comply with all, uh, city ordinances. He's here as well. And that's been zoned light industrial for years, right? It is, yeah.
Your honor, I move that we accept the zoning, uh, appeals board recommendation for the, uh, various concern, variance concerning premises at twelve thirteen Canal Street.
Second.
Motion, Alman Patac, second Alman, Reynolds, everybody has the information on that, please take the roll.
Alderman Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Old business.
Authorization of final pay estimate for Cruz Concrete Inc., totaling night, forty-nine thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars for work completed to date on Train Depot retaining wall projects and related matters.
Your honor, I make a motion, we authorize payment, uh, for Cruz Concrete for, for, uh, forty-nine thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars for the work completed to date, Train Depot retaining wall project and related matters. Second.
Motion, Alman Reynolds, second Alman, uh, Laveri, take the roll, please.
Alderman Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Authorization of pay estimate number one for Universal Asphalt and Excreting Ink totaling two hundred and nine thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars and eight cents for work completed to date on Rovere Park Phase Four, Pickleball, and Parking Lot Improvements Project and Related Matters.
Your honor, I move that we grant the authorization of pay estimate number one for Universal Asphalt Excreting.
Second.
Motion, Alman Herndon, Sir Alman Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Authorization of pay request number twenty for Vissering Construction Company totaling one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred five dollars and fifty-five cents for work completed to date on aerobic digester con- conversion projects and related matters.
Your honor, I make a motion that we, uh, authorize the payment request number twenty for Vissering Construction as written. Second.
Motion from Alman Reynolds, second Alman, Laveri, please take the roll.
Alderman Jepson?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Gentlemen, any old business? New business?
Discussion, potential action on, including but not necessarily limited to, potential approval of letter of support for recreational economy for rural communities initiative and related matters.
This was erroneously carried over from the last agenda to this agenda, so we can pass over this item.
Thank you, Brian. Any other new business? I have a couple things, guys, uh, just wanna let everybody know, I know we talked about it, uh, the lead back, and that will start basically depending on, you know, we got some wind last night, so I thought we'd see some relief down, but not quite yet, so as soon as John RBC, our foreman, and, uh, Kevin Fay, give us a heads up, we'll get the word out to everybody on that. So, again, in the meantime, we do have the, uh, yard waste drop available, to drop off any limbs still, and any bushes and, and branches and leaves you might have fallen down, and also, if you have bags, uh, across, from St. Vincent Cemetery on three fifty-one is our Public Works Building, there's actually a container there, that you'll see other bags already, you can actually put your, your yard bags there if you wanna take them out to the, uh, drop off place.
Has to be the paper bags.
It has to be the paper bags, good point, yep. Um, I do wanna announce that, uh, we're gonna have a controlled burn out at the drop, to kinda make some room for the fall, you know, we're gonna get more stuff dropped in the fall. That'll be next Tuesday, be a one-day event to try to clear some of that out, to make some space, so we're gonna get the word out to everybody, that'll be next Tuesday. Uh, control one day, just one day controlled burn, try to get some extra space out there, uh, we wanna make sure everybody is aware of that.
And I know, your honor, we're keeping an eye on the weather, right?
Correct.
On that, so, so, I make every effort whatsoever not to.
Yep.
Not to catch that.
Yeah, we don't wanna, again, I know I'm gonna ask, uh, Chief, Chief's aware of it, we'll see if he thinks we should have, because as I see some communities are having burn bans right now, we'll, we'll let, leave it up to finally the chief if he thinks, and we try to keep that separate, but ultimately, his coffee things, we have the green light to do it or not, so, I, I don't want a whole lot of rain before that, because we know it'll burn a lot better if we don't get rain, but we want to be safe, of course, so.
Thank you, your honor.
Uh, October twenty-sixth, that'll be before our next meeting, is gonna be hometown Halloween downtown, uh, officially starts about ten forty-five with the dancing heads. Again, that will all start behind the, um, across the street from Public Works Building, right behind the Knights of Columbus in that parking lot, and then it'll costume party, dancing hags, and it will, maybe, this is downtown, we'll be offering trick or treating, and then, uh, X Church at the new home there at First and Tonnick, we'll be having activities all day, uh, barrel rides, all that good stuff, uh, as you finish trick or treating downtown, that, in the town, so definitely looking forward to it, looks like right now the weather looks pretty promising, so we'll see how it is, but again, that's open to the public, uh, ten forty-five, and I really appreciate, cause I think other communities are doing things that day, but they're, everybody's kinda adjusting it, so we're not overlapping, which is very cool, so, again, ten forty-five, contests will start at eleven o'clock, and people will start, going ahead and trick or treating as soon as possible after that.
I, I have two items, new business as well, um, we, if you remember correctly, Mayor, somebody came to us, um, a while back looking to do a community garden, um, Renee Kim, we, we've been working with her to get a, a website going where she can seek out volunteers to assist, the city's made a plot available near the fire department, and I will have press releases for the media, um, after this as well. Um, again, it's Renee Kim, and, uh, she's looking for volunteers, you can look at our Facebook page or in the news media to find ways to, to show interest in the event, or interest in the garden, that's something she just wanted to kinda get off the ground, and we've, we've assisted in, in in allowing her to do so with, with her own volunteer group, so she's gonna be leading the charge on that, that.
We, we tried this years ago, the same lot.
Yeah, the, it worked out for a couple seasons, but I think that group just decided they were done, you know, getting a little older, so, I think they used the, the water from the fire department right there, which is very handy, so. And also the fact that it's on a main drag, kinda was actually, extra protection, maybe from anybody who might try to, you know, mess with it.
Yeah. Somebody stealing tomatoes.
Alderman Thompson had brought to my attention too, there were some mattresses out there, we had seen in the ward that were kind of just left by the curb, um, did notify LRS, they did pick those up, the ones that were wrapped, I believe. But it is a reminder to everybody that, uh, if you have a large item, make sure to call LRS, let them know, uh, times when the truck comes by, they can't fit it in the truck themselves, they always like to get a phone call, let them know it's out there, so they can send somebody by to collect it. Mattresses do have to be wrapped, and that phone number to call them is three zero nine five eight six four four one zero to schedule that large item pickup. We did put that on social media today, and it will be going in the billing messages, um, this week or next week as well.
Three oh nine five eight six four four one zero?
You got it.
Alright, cool.
Thank you for doing that, I saw, of course, you forwarded that stuff on Facebook, and I saw you had posted it, and I'm like, perfect, because everything was right there.
The other mattresses I made apparent to our building inspector, so.
I did have one more item I didn't wanna bring up, and we'll definitely keep an eye on it, Alman Patac brought to my attention, uh, Thursday night, we had somebody basically take out the planter and the flagpole, at my famous island there, at First and La Harp, um, we were trying to do some more, maybe one more shot at trying to make that a little more visible, if that, like, Alman Patac, maybe, maybe we need to remove it, but again, it was a drunk driver, under influence, they got cited for it, and then unfortunately Saturday, another car hit it, um, hit the oil pan, they, they abandoned their car and ran away. So we found out from the police that that person was driving without, uh, license, so that's probably one reason why they ditched. Uh, when the officer went to investigate, it was a situation where obviously they could tell they were under the influence a little bit, the person admitted they were drinking, but again, Alman Thompson probably knows it's better not, you know, when you leave the sign, it's a lot harder to say, well, you, you were drunk at the time, right? Cause they could say, man, I was so shaken up, I had four beers and I got home, so, um, see, but I think those, both those things were kinda situations, unfortunately, that were because of other circumstances, but I know other people have hit it before, and, you know, blown a tire and stuff, so, give me one more chance, see if we can get some more stuff out there, and if we had to, but it, I think it's nice to look at, to show where the end of First Street business is, and compared to, you know, uh, other residential, uh, but again, we'll kinda keep an eye on it.
Yeah, we'll put a target on it.
Any other new business, gentlemen? Maybe.
There is some, uh, going to darker.
Paint. Discussion, potential action on the following additional ordinances, resolutions.
An ordinance amending the employee handbook for the city of La Salle.
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending the employee handbook for the city of La Salle, placed on file, each alderman has a copy.
Second.
Motion, Alman Reynolds, Sir Alman Thompson, please take the roll.
Yes. Alderman Herndon?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing a variance concerning premises at twelve thirteen Canal Street, rural within the city of La Salle.
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance authorizing the variance concerning premises at twelve thirteen Canal Street with, uh, within the city of La Salle, placed on file, each alderman has a copy.
I'll second that, your honor.
Motion, Alman Reynolds, Sir Alman Patac, please take the roll.
Alderman Crane?
Aye.
Bassador?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Patac?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Laveri?
Aye.
Jepson?
Aye.
Aye.